When hasn't it been?
All right, thank you, our break is over. And we just finished the presentations from KMA, so thank you, Tim and Debbie. Do you have any questions? Do you want to go?
Are there more presentations?
Is there, oh, I think that was, that concludes the presentation? John, or, you're right, okay. So, back to us. Do we want to have questions? Go back, oh, that's for later, thank you. Anyone would like to start? I've got a list, all right.
So do we need to open it to public?
No, it's our deliberations for us, so I'll open it later for public comment afterward. First, it's us. So, did you want to start, Craig?
Sure. So I've got a question. In the eight-page summary, you mentioned the 25-acre solar farm of the DSP, but when I searched the 59-page report, and I fear I did not read every line of the numbers in the back, but I searched for the word solar, and I didn't see it listed anywhere. So I was wondering if you did any sort of analysis as you did for the breakouts for some of the other things, like residential, in terms of cost per acre, in terms of, you know, how much it'll bring in proportionally?
Well, you mean on the feasibility analysis?
Right, like is it a burden, or is it a benefit? And did you analyze that?
Well, I see, yeah, I understand, I think I understand the question. I, we're, we were coming from the point, it certainly could be one of the land uses, for sure, but we were coming from the point of view that how do you get the land value above the infrastructure costs? Now, we don't see solar farms, you know, funding $100 million of infrastructure, so, so, you know, when I said primary land uses, in those, so the primary, you could attach them onto the primary land uses, but they're not, so, the context of what we did was, was, what was, how to get it going, and what it would take to get it going, that doesn't mean that you couldn't put solar farm as part of it, but the primary land use couldn't be solar farm, just to open up the project. So, probably a little bit different context than maybe you're asking the question?
Well, no, I mean, that's a good starting point. I mean, you say that the primary use couldn't be solar, so did you analyze, or do you have a rough idea, like if it was 100% solar energy, would that be a nest loss, and how much? I mean, you may be aware there was an alternative energy plan, which had a lot of solar, and a million square feet of retail or so, and that was previously deemed to be economically feasible, but it not to this level, so I was just wondering if you had any more data or insights to share on that?
The short answer is no. The longer answer might be, I don't think there's any, I mean, in the real estate world, everything is done on comparables, and where can you find another one that generates that kind of land value? And I, we don't, not at that level, not at, not at the high level of infrastructure costs that need to be incurred to open up the site. I mean, you would not cross the threshold. So, with, and the, and the million square feet of a retail center, that's, that's, I'm going to say this wrong, but that's an old-school kind of number in terms, that's like, that's like Hillsdale Shopping Center. I don't think so. I mean, I don't think there's a market for another Hillsdale Shopping Center here. I mean, it just, it's, and retail is, you know, it's, it's a challenged market in some ways now with the internet and everything else, unless you have 700,000 square feet or whatever, the factory outlet is being done across on the candlestick. So I think a million square feet retail is, maybe at some point in the cycle that made sense, but not, I would not say today.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the next question is just to confirm that I understood what you said. So you assumed a full build-out, so you didn't do any probability analysis or anything like that, just see what the probability curve for these different build-out amounts might be?
Well, I mean, this is not, the data we're dealing with is pretty high-level.
Right.
And, you know, if you were doing your probability analysis, the first line on the page would be way up on the graph, going flat, because it's a fixed cost, it has to be funded.
Right.
And then you would, so you gotta get above that line, and that's what I was trying to talk about, you know, and that, that's really the challenge, is these high fixed costs that have to be incurred upfront for, for major, anything that happened out there.
Mm-hmm. So I also had a question about metering of the different phases. You discussed, like, you know, making sure that one phase was viable before moving on to the next, and it was talking about occupancy, but I'm wondering if that could or should also be tied to revenue? And typically, are you, I mean, I'm assuming that in the DSP, each phase was a mixture of residential and commercial, so you have a mixture of things that are positive and, and negative balancing, and just like, you know, just to name one example, you know, what if you build all of the housing, and then the retail stays empty, and you're at a deficit?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's the point, and that's why you can set up this metering where you wouldn't have that. You couldn't have that. You couldn't have, you can't build out all the residential and not build out your, some retail, or the office, or some hotel to offset the, the residential. Unless you have a residential plan that you devise beforehand that shows that you don't need those uses in order to be financially viable. But even setting aside the, the fiscal, if you want to have a balanced program, regardless of the fiscal impacts, and you just want to have a balanced program, you can have those metering requirements, like they have in Vis Valley with these public benefits, that you have to have this, you have to have, for example, they want a grocery store, full-scale grocery store. They're requiring that that full-scale grocery store be in the first phase, regardless of whether or not there's market for it, but that's a condition for good, for going forward in that first phase. They have to provide, build out this historic office building, which is very expensive. It's, there's not a market, it's going to be, it's, you know, it's, it's more expensive, it's not generating, it's not paying for itself. But they have to do that in a certain timeframe, or the way, they won't be able to pull more residential permits. So you can set those thresholds, saying you cannot, you cannot pull, say, your 300th residential building permit until this is in place, or until this retail center has generated this level of taxable sales. And you try to set the metrics something that are easy to, you know, to actually go back and verify. And you can do that by retail sales, or whether or not they exist, you know.
So in that example you gave, is the applicant paying for the grocery store? Or did someone actually happen to come and want to put in a grocery store?
It's, 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 that's somewhat of the benefit of having these big mixed-use projects, because some component, that component is, is, doesn't pay for itself. It's a lost leader, so it doesn't stand on its own. But the value, the, the value of the residential is being used to subsidize the grocery store.
So someone decided to build a grocery store based on the residential units?
So they, as a condition for getting this project approved, they knew in order to get community support, that grocery store had to be in the project, and it not only had to be in the project, it had to be built in Phase One. So they have to fund that, and...
Right, so they have a building, but then someone has to move into the building?
Yeah, they have to have, you have to have a tenant in place, too. They're out there right now getting a tenant to occupy that building, so that...
So that's then their responsibility to find, find a tenant who willing to run the business?
Correct, correct. But you can have a whole menu of public benefits that have to be in place, and as a condition in order to go proceed with these other, you know, economic-generating uses. Affordable housing, you can have certain requirements there, you know, it can, it can run the full gamut.
As an example, in Memorial Park, the Bohemians had to build a hotel before they could build more office space. And they finally, they had to wait a couple of years till the hotel market came around till they got the hotel. But, it's a carrot and a stick, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so my next question is on the fees and taxes for residents, and you mentioned an assessment district, which I understand for the residence boils down to a property tax. I'm wondering if, if you have an analysis, you know, you said that all of the costs for residential could be covered by an assessment district, and that would come out to be around 500 a month by one of your figures. And I'm wondering if there's an analysis of, or an idea of how that affects the value of the commercial and residential units as they're burdened with these expenses? And are there disclosure requirements commonly? Because I know in the past, some people have complained to me that at Brookdale, some of these fees weren't clear, and I'm sure it must have been somewhere in the escrow papers. So...
No, there, there are...
Are you talking about Brookfield?
Sorry, I didn't mean Brookfield, I meant the bridge.
Oh, okay.
No, there are, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, over time, there's been a lot of press about Melrose districts and what's happened, and so I think now, they have to be very careful about disclosing all of that to prospective buyers. And in terms of whether or not, what happens to impact on the prices of the homes, for example, it's, it's a function of the market. And so it's, if you're in a soft market, you can't, you can't impose a burden on that without, then if, they'll go buy, people will buy houses elsewhere, they don't have that high of a burden, or don't have any burden. So it's a function of market conditions. But you have to look at what's the HOA dues are, and what the C, the Melrose dues are. And in this project, they'll probably have a Melrose or a CFD to help find part of the infrastructure. So there will be a CFD burden on the residential units for infrastructure, plus probably a CFD for municipal services. And then, and you compare that to what's happening in the marketplace. For example, at Bay Meadows, I think that they established that overall tax burden there is about 1.5 to 1.7 percent. And so you would peg it, there's a sweet spot there where you can, you can put these additional tax burdens without it affecting the market price, or you, you look at what that, the trade-offs are. But that, it's a very standard mechanism.
I'm, I'm, I'm really confused about how that works.
Well, when you buy a house...
Right.
And they disclose this house, you have your 1% property tax...
Right.
...burden, but in addition, if you buy this house, you're going to have to pay HOA dues for maintenance. And those are going to be, you know, $200 or $300 or $500 a month, or $1,000 in, in San Francisco on some units, and, so I don't know what they will be here, I have no idea. But anyway, so there will be an HOA, and they'll have to disclose that to you. If there's an assessment district, they could be a parcel assessment, but, but that would be, have to be voted, established by voters. So it will likely be, it would be, it's called a community facilities district for maintenance, a CFD maintenance tax. And that burden might be, say, 25 cents, so, or 25 percent, you know, 25 basis points. You'd have, your overall tax burden would be your 1% property tax plus .25. You'd have a 1.25 tax burden.
So, if you put in the infrastructure, and then that's considered part of the tax burden, such as the streets and everything, and that's done for a certain number of years?
Well...
I think.
Well, what they, they often will do is that they, they can, it's a, it's a tax on your, it's on your property tax bill, and then they will go out and they will issue bonds that are secured by that property tax revenue, and they will use that bond revenue to reimburse them for the infrastructure cost. They have to put all the infrastructure in, developer will have to advance all those funds for constructing the infrastructure. Once the infrastructure's in place, then they're out selling these pads, they're selling building pads to vertical builders, and the vertical builders sell the, you know, finished homes. They will then sell infrastructure bonds that are secured by that tax levy, and, and that will pay, you know, pay them back for, for the portion of the infrastructure costs. But that's what's commonly done when you have large projects that have a lot of infrastructure. And you can have, they're very standard for residential projects, and some of them are also, they have the CFDs also for commercial projects, for both.
Okay, no further questions? Questions?
I, I wanted to ask about schools. We didn't, how were you factoring in schools, or you were not factoring in schools?
I have not looked at the impacts on schools.
On building schools, or?
But the, when you were considering the, the revenue from property tax, you didn't consider the portion that went to the school district to fund the schools and their other...
No, the school, yeah, impacts on schools would be separate, so...
Right, but I'm saying you removed that portion.
Correct.
You didn't consider it, but there's also a portion of the income that's going to the school district.
Yeah, the schools get, yeah.
It was not part of your analysis.
You know, school funding is a, is a strange animal, in that they, it depends upon whether the district is a basic aid district, or if it's a, if it's a revenue district, and so, but we did not, we excluded the tax revenues that would go to the school, or to the state to fund the school. We just looked at the tax revenues to the city.
So there, I just found it kind of strange, there was no fact, if you have X amount of homes, you know, this is quite a number of homes, you would have a certain number of children who are going to be going to schools, and schools are a really big source of, you know, you know, they, they cost a lot of money to maintain, and it's not in there at all.
I, I don't think we're allowed to consider, because it's a separate body.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's not...
How about the library, too, you know? I mean, cost to maintain and build the library?
That's in there.
That's in there.
That's in the main, operations of the library in there, because that's a city obligation. The school district is a different entity, and, I mean, we were not, we did not look at the impacts on the schools. I'm not saying that there's no impacts on school, because I understand, I mean, you have this many units, they're going to have a lot of, a big impact on the school.
Yeah, we, we don't know the percentage of money that would be needed to pay for the schools, districts. I mean, it's just not in there at all.
No, and I'll just say that the impact fees that are required by law for schools, for school construction, you have impact fees that are required, they, they're not sufficient to cover the cost of constructing a school. If you have to construct a school in order to serve the project, if your existing schools are not under capacity and can't absorb the additional schools, you have to build a new school, the revenues from impact fees for schools will not be sufficient to cover the costs of school construction. And so in some projects, the developers have part of, in order to get entitlements, that then they are providing additional compensation to the schools to help fund the construction of schools. So that's on top of the impact fees, and that's pretty common, you know, and down, for example, I'm working on a project in Cupertino, and, and it's the redevelopment of the shopping center, and that developer is going to be making a significant contribution towards funding schools on top of the impact fees that are obligated by law.
Okay. But we have no idea how that's factored in at all.
It's not fact, I mean, I haven't...
I mean, okay.
I, I mean, I haven't looked at school impacts.
Okay, thanks.
Part of the answer, though, I mean, it's, you're a little bit ahead of us, but if you had a development agreement, you would, one of the requirements is you probably would dig deeper into it, have a requirement about schools, either dedicating a site and/or building it, as part of that agreement. It's part of the overall agreement, and it's a capital cost and an obligation of the developer, and as Debbie was talking about metering and things like that, you, maybe it's not the first thing that's built, but, you know, it has to be built at some point in the process to continue on.
And the first step of that is understanding what will be the school generation rates. So you take the number of units, and then you have an analysis done of how many children, and at what ages, you know, how many elementary kids, how many middle school, how many high school kids, additional kids will be generated by this development. And then you, and then you look at the capacity of the schools to accommodate that additional growth, and then you look at the need for additional facilities, and to accommodate that, that growth. And so that's what's typically done, as Tim says, and then, and then you incorporate that into this development agreement of how that the schools are being addressed, just like we look at how the impacts on the city are being addressed, you can look at how the impacts on the schools are being addressed, and if there are other, other service districts of, of concern, that that can also be addressed in this.
So are there, so, okay, so there's schools, and we haven't, this is not in there at all. What else is not in here? I just, I'm trying to think. We have the fire department, we have the maintenance of the streets, the building of the streets, the cleaning up of the environment. I was just trying to think what else we have that's kind of dropped off and not even addressed.
If I can just clarify, the, the scope of work that Kaiser Marshawn was given was to look at the fiscal impacts on the city of Brisbane's general fund. So anything that's general fund, that, that's what pays for it, that's, that's what's covered. The school district is not, obviously, under the jurisdiction of the city of Brisbane.
No, I understand that.
So that's why it was not included. Their scope of work is any activity, facility, services that are provided by the city of Brisbane.
I'd like to, to go back, because maybe it was a point, I mean, in a lot of, as you heard us tonight, it's hard to...
Excuse me, could you raise the microphone?
Yeah, it's hard to predict the future, you know, where there's a lot of judgments, and who knows, right? So what happens in these development agreements is you, you break the project up into phases, and they have, the applicant has to come in and meet certain tests to proceed with each phase, and meet certain requirements. So you don't have to guess now what the future is. I mean, Debbie made reference to it a bunch of times. So, I mean, so if you're kind of walking away saying, this is a big project, how am I ever going to be able to predict the future? What you do is you start breaking it into pieces, and that, as they proceed with each piece, it has to make sure it meets certain tests, whether it's schools, which is not what we were doing, or fiscal impact, or whatever, or, you know, whatever. So, I mean, it actually has to be reasonable, but, but it's, because it's not possible to predict over 300 acres and 20 years, how this is all going to unfold. So what we were giving you is this overview, and Debbie, at the end of her presentation, gave you a series of tools that people use to manage the process, so it isn't like you sign an agreement, and you walk away, and they just do it. You know, they come back, and each phase needs to prove that it's not going to be a burden on the general fund, and you can add other, or there may be a requirement to open up the next phase, so you, you manage it and not have to predict the future by breaking it into pieces, and that each piece needs to meet certain tests.
Okay, I have a question regarding the solar farm. The infrastructure for solar farm alone will not be that extensive, would it be?
We're not solar farm experts, to be honest.
The thing is, you are talking about such a long, I mean, very costly upfront cost, but if you just have the solar farm there at the beginning...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You won't have required any of the roads and all that.
Of course, of course. You know, you might be able to do a solar farm without...
Any kind of...
Yeah, of course. That's what I talk about, these refinements and evolution of these numbers. Yes, of course, yeah.
Now, the solar farm in conjunction with the, with the hotel, would that be more manageable in terms of taking care of the upfront cost for the...
No.
That's why...
No, I mean, we're talking big numbers. I mean, if you, even if you scale it down to $100 million, I mean, a solar farm's not going to pay $100 million. I mean, you got to close it, remediation, there are some big numbers that have to be spent to move the project forward. That's why, I mean, you can maybe work on the edges, maybe, and do a solar farm or whatever, but if you have to cross that line where you got to close, close it, remediation, you're all of a sudden, you're into very big numbers that literally, I mean, they're going to have to be managed and figured out how to, you can't spend it all, you can't spend a billion dollars at once, obviously. So they're going to have to figure out how to break it into pieces and manage it, but still, I mean, we believe that it's still going to have to be some major project, you know? Maybe a solar farm can be done without triggering all that? I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be able to support triggering, you know, if it triggers it, no.
Also, did you consider the ongoing cost for monitoring the environmental concerns like, you know, natural gas and continuous monitoring of all the...
Well, I...
Toxic stuff that...
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the short answer is no. I mean, the longer answer is, that's going to be a requirement to build any project, they're going to have to, you know, manage whatever environmental issues are, monitoring wells, or whatever. That's just part of the, that's part of the vertical real estate development that has to be, they got to wrap that into the private sector funding those costs.
But the thing is, this is going to be a long-term cost. I mean, the monitoring will go on for a long, very long time.
Yeah.
And...
You're almost reinforcing my point about this is an expensive piece of property to open up. I mean, there's these long-term obligations with remediation, and wells, and costs that the private sector's going to have to pay for.
Yeah, the city won't be doing the monitoring.
No, no, the city is not.
Yeah.
The private sector is doing this.
Okay. So that has to be spelled out in the development agreement, because a lot of times the, the developers build the, the housing and, or whatever the structures, and they change hands, or they just left...
Yeah, to be honest, in today's world, they're not going to get financing from anybody without having all the environmental clearances in place, and remedial action plans, and all that signed off by the water department, you know, everybody's going to have to sign off on it as, because the private sector is not going to finance something that doesn't have all those pieces in place. Again, that's a big effort, a lot of work needs to be done to do that. So again, it kind of takes you back to a bigger project, but those are all private sector, private sector responsibilities, which is, which it should be with the regulatory agencies.
Okay. And the other question is, yeah, based on your scope of your work, you didn't, you didn't look at the long-term impact as a result of this project, environmental impact, or, or, you know, the concerns regarding some people getting sick with the, whatever the toxic stuff, or, and the pollution, generation, generation of the pollution and all that?
Conversely, we made the assumption that residential, there would be appropriate environmental clearances for residential. I mean, if it's not, if you can't get those environmental clearance, obviously, you can't do residential.
But the thing is, I'm looking at the long-term cost as a result of that, like people developing certain types of diseases and all that. Are you going to offset the cost benefit, because now somebody has to pay in the future time? But that's not part of the general plan that...
I am, that's, you're sort of beyond our expertise on this. I, I would think the environmental agencies that have to permit and clear the site for residential or commercial...
Yeah.
Have to address those issues.
Because I'm looking at the fiscal impact, the overall fiscal, fiscal impact as a result of this project, and one of the impact will be this long-term cost associated with this, and somebody has to do the analysis to show how that's going to be affecting the taxpayers.
Except it won't be from the general fund.
But in this scope, the scope of the work you had, probably you didn't cover this here.
Right, I don't think that was in the scope of their work.
Yeah.
We're assuming that, you know, that there aren't long-term health impact. I mean, if they, it should, projects shouldn't be built if they're going to be long-term health impact. I mean, nobody should be getting sick from this project, so, I mean, we're not looking at that.
Right, that wasn't factored in.
That's what we say for every project, and then we find out... That's what we say for every project and then we find out in years later.
Well, we we have not looked at any cost, health costs of the project.
John, did you have a comment?
Oh, just again, and I think Tim is aware of this, I'd frame it a little differently. There's been an ongoing discussion with the city council about wanting to look at sort of the costs and benefits of economic sustainability measures and things like capturing externalities, which you're talking about, or, you know, societal costs of development, side effects and whatnot. And that's something the council subcommittee is is trying to scope that out and develop a, find a scope of work and hire a consultant to do that sort of analysis, something that's an ongoing sort of area of study that's really not very well-developed as a, in the consultant realm. And so I know Tim's aware of the sort of that. The genesis of that is framed a little different than you brought it up and he's aware of it. And that was not part of Kaiser Marston's scope of work.
What I'm trying to get here is overall fiscal impact and that will be part of the fiscal impact analysis also.
That's not part of the fiscal, because again, as Tim pointed out, you're talking about the societal costs and the broader issues, those are not issues that are going to be sort of a direct implication on the city's general fund. So the very different kind of question and issue.
I understand.
Great, thank you. I had, I had one question.
Sure.
And and this is mainly to inform us and the public too, is could you just briefly describe when you're doing comps for this kind of project? What are you looking, I know you mentioned a lot of factors like surrounding the area, like the airport. But when you're looking at, you know, is this, do you look at it as a, as a profile match? Or do you just do individual pieces and then bring it together? Like, how how can you get as close as possible to the actual profile of each one of these plans? When you're doing comps, so if you could walk us through how you do that briefly?
I'm not, to be honest, not totally sure I understand the question.
So when you're doing a comp for one element of of the plan, right? Are you taking in consideration the other, you know, the project itself, the location? You know, there's similar projects like this. And I was just curious how close.
There is nothing like.
Is there enough, anything? I was wondering what you found.
Might be the closest thing, but.
What was that, sorry?
Base closure, you know.
Oh, base closure.
I mean, you're talking about six hundred acres or three hundred acres net. I mean, it's a, it is a major, I mean, it's, it's, you know, foster city, go back, you know. You know, it's it's a major, major project. It's a, but I think the locational, the intrinsic values of the location are very strong. I mean, if there wasn't the existing uses on the site, I mean, it's a, a very, very strong location. And just given the dynamics of the the real estate market and the economy in general in the Bay Area, I mean, this is right, it got, has Caltrain, 101, you know, everybody goes right past it, airport. This is a very strong site.
But then when you're looking at like potential revenue for hotels, but then you're saying, oh, you've got a thousand, you know.
There are two things, one is a hotel is not going to open up the site in terms of funding the infrastructure costs. But, you know, if you were to get some corporation or some major corporate tenant, you have to look at it as a vision. If you just look at it as a freestanding site that out there now with the landfill operation and a five-acre site for a hotel, not the world's greatest site. You put out, you know, you put a million square foot campus out there with Facebook or some other campus, you know, halfway between the airport and a major campus, all of a sudden, it looks a lot better as a hotel site. The hotels will follow that, you know, because, and you know, there are other examples of that. So those land uses, that's why I don't call them the primary land uses. They've, they follow the other. So as the, as it evolves and becomes more of a reality in the marketplace, those uses are then attracted to it. But to go out there today as is, it's not going to happen, right? Plus, there's all the infrastructure costs that have to be done, so.
Right, that's fair.
So I guess the answer to your question is, we sort of see it as a vision as a, you know, a really transformational type of project that it's not Sierra Point, you know, it's, it's sort of the next, the twenty-first century generation of how major infill projects are going to have to happen. Plus, it has a major cost that's got to overcome, so it's going to have to figure it out.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
No, no.
I was just, one more, one more thing. You were showing the the different places in here about how much revenue is brought in for each thing, like hotels and what's it? If I look down in the numbers below, do you also have calculations for what the net revenue is that generated that income?
On the, on the fiscal?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's the same as, you know, we did it by land use by, by scenario.
Right.
So the net is the same as the net is on the table that shows for each project, the one point one million net benefit for the project. Let me see what slide.
You know, I'm not, I'm not talking about the the net benefit. So, you know, if we earn a million dollars in net revenue, then that's funded by businesses who earn more than that in order to pay their taxes. And I'm wondering if you have those numbers as well? The net in, or the net general, business profit?
I'm sorry, I mean, you're talking about the impacts by land use? The slide that we had on the impacts by land use, or no?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to find the the slide, but.
Is it on slide eleven?
Here's, here's one where you say, you know, property tax and transient occupancy tax. Like, just to look at transient occupancy tax, for example. What page am I on? Fifteen, yes, exactly, nine point seven million. I was just wondering roughly what is the revenues pulled in by the hotel that they're paying taxes on that generated that number?
Okay, you're looking at the hotel, the.
Transient occupancy tax.
Nine point seven five million?
Right.
Yeah, and you want to know what, how was.
How much money is the hotel making in order to pay nine million dollars in taxes?
Oh, the room rate, we assumed for each, we assumed a room revenue of a hundred and fifty dollars a night and we assumed an average occupancy rate of seventy-five, seventy-five percent. So it's, it's, it, you take the number of hotel rooms, which we had in the community proposed plan.
So do you have that number? You, you're saying numbers, you multiply them all together, do you have that bottom line in here somewhere?
Uh, I could just, I can calculate it for you.
Or you could tell me what to search for.
Well, I know, I just have to, uh. Let me see.
Yeah, I'm just looking for roughly, you know, what the percentage.
It's twelve, the twelve percent tax rate.
Twelve percent, okay, so I could just.
On the room revenue.
Multiply, okay, great.
Yeah, this is grocery receipts. So it's, it's a twelve percent tax rate.
Okay.
Just have to use my calculator.
That's sufficient for now.
Okay.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, I have one more question. Did you factor in the three hundred, when you're talking about three hundred acres, did you factor in the space that was already being used by the lumberyard and some of the places that are already occupied?
Uh, good question, I think those are outside, yes.
Those are outside of it.
Yeah, I mean, so we started out with six hundred and thirty-eight acres. And I, John.
And you take away.
Yeah, I think the assumptions were that those, at least the retail use, the lumberyard was going to be relocated, so.
And and so that would be the same acreage, amount of acreage. So that's outside of the three hundred acres, I assume.
Again, a lot of these numbers are, I mean, there's an allocation, there's some judgments and rounded it. There are some judgments and then we rounded it at three hundred acres because it's a nice round number.
Right.
It's, it's not unreasonable number.
Okay. Good?
I'm fine.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Yeah, so, yeah, any other comments amongst us or we're all good? Okay, so at this point, our deliberations are complete. And as a reminder, a friendly reminder, the public hearings have closed and providing time for further public comment is not required. However, we have created a limit, a limited public comment section to follow our deliberations. And I see we have one here, so I won't go into detail about time limits. And if someone covers your point, you're welcome to come up and state that you support that point, but please no debate or rebuttal in order to maintain order. Thank you. Can we have a motion to open public comment?
Make a motion to open the public comment.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anya, come on down.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing the public comment.
Of course.
Anya Miller, Brisbane resident and also active in the community group that is promoting the renewable energy alternative, which of course was not at all part of this fiscal analysis that you've just heard. And they do refer to the community proposed project. And of course, it's been said many times that it really was not proposed as such. There were land uses stated, but not the acreage at all. That was, it's much, much larger than the community would have wanted. At least that's my, because what the community would like and has presented is the renewable alternative that does look at the public interest, not just the developer's interest, which of course you've heard and you know what what it's going to be for them, what they need. But what does the public need? And that is the renewable energy alternative, which has not yet been fully developed. As we say, it needs a specific plan instead of just the concept that we have presented and has been in the, has been evaluated feasibility as far as construction. And so what what I just want to stress is that you need to call for a more expanded development. And we have, we envisioned into that besides the solar, major solar, that is, that has a market now, especially with the community choice district we are just forming, the Peninsula Clean Energy. But there is, there was a hotel, there was retail and and office and could very well be this campus type of thing. And that, that's all that would be acceptable within the public interest component of the renewable alternative. So I just hope that you will, and we know that the cleanup level that's required by the state regulatory agencies is related to the land uses. So if you have solar farm, of course, that level will be less, all that's known. But this all needs to be studied. And so you need to look into that further, get a better specific plan that you can really look at and compare to the developer's scenarios. And then have a fiscal analysis. And because we're talking about the public interest here, above all, public interest, the public participation also comes in, I think in a different way. Federal, state, Peninsula Clean Energy, those are all sources, not just the developer paying for everything. But if there is public interest, there should be public participation at some level. So all this could be analyzed. And certainly, the sustainability analysis is still, you need that, the long-term effects and and what it means for the planet. So I think you're starting well and I just hope you continue in a really public, you are here elected, appointed to represent the public, looking at developers' plans, but you represent the public, us. And we are saying, please, analyze, develop further a concept that's been presented to you by the public. Thanks.
Thank you, Anya. Joel, come on down.
Good evening, honorable planning commissioners, Joel Diaz. So, yeah, so just want to thank the city or whoever's responsible for preparing these fiscal analysis reports. They're, they're really helpful. And I think people have been asking for them for a long time. And I think they shed a lot of light on, on, you know, how much revenue this potentially will generate for the city of Brisbane. And, you know, my interpretation of the data is it looks pretty bleak. I think the presentation made tonight really confirms that. Typically, when you hear like a sales pitch to a city or to some investors, you know, you hear all the good, the good attributes, the positive return on investment. And we didn't hear any of that. You know, what we heard was, you know, it's, it's really, we're starting off one point one billion in the hole and there really is no way to overcome that, except maybe with time. As the market conditions improve, somehow it'll, it'll incentivize this development. And the, we were, we were told about some possible tools, ways to sort of offset these costs and ways to mitigate these things. But in the end, somebody has to pay for those costs, like a special use tax on construction materials. Well, we all know that that gets passed down to the customer, the consumer. In this case, would be the developer. So someone's still going to have to pay that. So I think the number was thrown around, it might be three hundred million. Well, if the developer has to pay three hundred million dollars, that's just making this whole project that much more expensive. So the problem is, is they're already deep in the hole on this thing. And it's because of the the cost of remediation and the cost of infrastructure. And the key to this whole development is to eliminate those costs. That's the impediment. When you look at both sides of the development, you have the west side, west of the tracks, between Bay Shore and the train tracks, and the east side, between the tracks and the bay or the freeway. The east side is the worst. That is the part that is very expensive to develop. The west side, close to Bay Shore, the infrastructure is already there. The land is relatively clean. This is, from a developer perspective, this is where you begin development. The infrastructure is already there. The costs are very low to begin. And that's the most valuable land. When you go to the east side, the toxic dump, the costs preclude development. And that's what these analysis reports, analysis reports confirm. And so my, my suggestion is to stay away from that side. And that's where the renewable energy plan, alternative plan suggests putting solar farm over that, that area of land because it does not necessitate the remediation cleanup, it does not necessitate the infrastructure. We don't need to build the Geneva Overpass. We can allow room for it to be there in the future, but we don't need to actually construct it. And we don't need city services to take care of it. The solar farm would just generate revenue. The, the land that needs to be developed or is best suited for development is the land to the west, between the tracks and Bay Shore. If that land is going to be housing, this fiscal report shows us that it's a two point one million deficit to the city of Brisbane. So that doesn't make sense to us. Also, according to the recent survey, it seems like the community doesn't want that kind of housing out there. So if something were to be developed, that's the place to develop it. It should be something that generates a lot of revenue for the city. It should be a win-win type development, win for the city, win for the developer kind of thing. It appears, according to this analysis, that hotels generate the most money through T O T. But, you know, the, part of the fundamental problem with these reports that I have is that it makes a lot of a. I have is that it makes a lot of assumptions, like the best possible case scenario, um, is what they're assuming here. And they're talking about hotels of 2,000 rooms, I think it's 1,900 and some rooms, is a tremendous, if you didn't know anything about the hotel market, you might think that makes sense, but if you did know about the hotel market, you would know that 2,000 hotel rooms in that location is impractical. It might take 50 years, 100 years before that kind of, uh, those kind of rooms would be absorbed. There are reports right now, SWIFT report, there are other hotel reports, that talk about how many rooms can be supported in a particular area. When people come here, they're not all just gonna stay in Brisbane, they like to stay in San Francisco, they like to stay in Palo Alto, so these hotels are, get built, they get spread out over the peninsula and there is no way that you could just rely on somehow 2,000 being put in one particular area. I can tell you right now, because I've seen one of those SWIFT reports, that, uh, in this boom of the economy right now, there are not very many hotels being built. There's, there's one or two in San Francisco planned, I think another one in South San Francisco, I don't remember exactly what it is, but it's nowhere near, uh, thousands of rooms. And so work had, and, and all the revenue generated in this is coming from hotels. So once you back out the hotel aspect, I think it's 10 million dollars is what these hotels, 2,000 rooms generates. Once you back that out of the equation, we have nothing. So I, I do like hotels, if we're going to build a hotel, you, it should be along Bay Shore on the west side, because that's something that could happen right away. It doesn't necessitate the great crop, the cost of remediation and infrastructure, the 1.1 billion. The, I just have a few more notes here. The, the, if you look in the report, the cost of city services, I think it's, um, it's about, it's also around 10 million for police, fire, public works to maintain all of this. Presumably that those services are gonna be dedicated to the 4,400 homes that would be there. So by eliminating the homes, we also eliminate a lot of those services. By eliminating the development of the eastern side, we eliminate a lot of those services and a lot of the debt and the work for the city and commitment and the financial risk that the city would have to bear. So the smart way to develop this, develop this is to eliminate those kind, kinds of costs and commitments if we can. Um, that's, that's the way I see it. The, the plan also has no provision for long-term maintenance and repair of the infrastructure. That stuff has also not been quantified, which also adds to the burden for someone to take care of this. So it's already a very deep hole, it's getting much deeper very quickly, these things have not been quantified. The, uh, I'm just checking my notes. So, so the, the notion that in time, this will become, um, financially more feasible as market conditions change, um, isn't really true. The cost, the replacement cost to build and develop typically moves in parity with the expected land value. So even though the land goes up in value, so do the costs to build and develop and remediate and the vertical cost. So the horizontal cost and the vertical cost will also go up. So there isn't going to be this sort of, um, uh, this, this imbalance, this disparity, if you will, where there will be so much money to offset these remediation costs. They will always be a burden, they will always be tied to this property. And the reason is, is because of the onerous requirement of infrastructure and the onerous requirement of remediating what was the San Francisco dump, a giant dump for the city of San Francisco. The, the, um, I'm, I'm almost done here. Just wanna get to this, uh, part of the report. So in this report here, it talks about, um, feasibility considerations and, and the two objectives here are, uh, were to, uh, determine, um, what would influence the developer to, to make this economically feasible and then, um, how does the city ensure that a project has fiscal positive impacts? Those were the two objectives here. And then they, what they spell out here is that the developer will be measuring feasibility in terms of a return on investment. So this is, this is here for us. So that's what they're gonna make their determination on. And right now, um, it's, it's a big loser. The 1.1 billion in horizontal cost does not include the cost of the land itself. The, I think the last part I wanna talk about here is that, um, at the end of, of this one report, and I don't see the title on it, but it's under horizontal development cost. It says here, if I can just read this, is, "As discussed above in the case study, horizontal development costs are a key driver in determining feasibility. As such, significant reductions in horizontal development costs could influence what might be considered a feasible development program. For example, if the horizontal development cost could be reduced from 1.1 billion to 600 million based on reduced development density, value engineering and other factors." So there, they, they want, they're proposing that it might be considered feasible if you could reduce 1.1 billion in horizontal costs down to 600 million. That means that somebody's gotta save 500 million or come up with 500 million, the city's gotta chip in 500 million. It's a tremendous deficit and hurdle to overcome. And then you add 300 million in special use tax, now it's not 500 million, it's 800 million, you have long-term maintenance of the roads and infrastructure, perhaps potentially hundreds millions, hundreds of millions more. And then you also have city services and pensions, unfunded liabilities. And our political system and our government employee system already has many challenges with that. So for us to commit to that risk and that, and that liability, we would have to have, justification. And this report doesn't, doesn't show us that one. That was one of their objectives, is to ensure how we're gonna have that. And typically, most of these cities do these kinda developments because they're being promised a ton of money, not just a little bit or a whole 1 million here, 8 million here, a lot, a lot of money. And we're just not, we're not seeing it here. And that's the problem with this development. So in closing, um, eliminate the east side, that's the solar farm, the west side is the, is the one with the most potential for development, can happen right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Mr. Scharfman, come on down. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan Scharfman with Universal Paragon, the project sponsor on this. Just a couple of clarifications on the 1.1 billion dollar, uh, cost number. Uh, in 2009, April, uh, there, there were preliminary estimates of construction and project-wide costs for infrastructure, land improvements and site-wide improvements that included, included community benefits of like, like the park construction, like the recycled water plant at 27 million dollars. That were included in those numbers. The 2009 numbers were, um, were much higher than 1.1. They were in excess of 1.3 billion dollars for the DSP and closer to 1.4 for the CPP. This is, this has all been vetted by, um, um, by the city staff. And it, it, there, there were assumptions, there were assumptions made that we, that to get to 1.1, that we, we really needed to be very aggressive about assuming that the overburden of soil that has benefited the city, the city's general fund for the, the past 20 years from, from, anywhere from a couple of hundred thousand to over 1 million dollars a year in net revenue to the general fund would, would actually be, would, would be taken off of the development cost pro forma and be managed through a soil management program through the phased development to lower that deferred burden on costs from the development side and take it into, uh, the operations side. So that was, that was addressed between 2009 and 2013, when, when revised costs were presented to the city.
What does that mean? Could you explain that, please?
Could you go back and explain that?
The, a, a significant portion of the development costs for any development, a CPP, a DSP or, or, or any of the variants, assumes a tremendous amount of costs associated with moving the soil overburden that has been taken in to, uh, to tempor, for temporary soil storage and surcharge that eventually will need to be moved from the east side, either to the west side or off-site. So as, as the city engineer has reported to this body and to the city council, uh, it's a requirement for the landfill closure, that that overburden be taken down to a certain level. And that has been taken into account as a development cost, uh, in, in the 2009 numbers, in the, in the 2013 numbers that carried through to the 1.1 that was reported tonight. Again, it, it did originate from UPC and its consultants. It, it really, that, that was the, the major area where the cost reductions were able to occur and so...
Are you just saying somehow the cost just vanished out of this?
I didn't say that they vanished.
What did you do to...
Ma'am, I didn't say that they vanished. What I, what I said was, in, in order, in order to pursue feasibility for any development program out there, we, we looked at, as the city was talking about a more phased development that would, that would start development on the west side, uh, as, as, uh, adjacent to where existing infrastructure on Bay Shore is. And there would be a longer, there would be a longer-term phasing plan for the east side. We looked, we looked at ways to, according to the EIR, the EIR requires over two and a half million cubic yards of, of, of soil to come into the west side to raise those grades to meet the requirements of the infrastructure plan and for proper drainage for, for the grades of the Geneva extension and the like. That's 2.6 million yards of material that what, what, uh, our original assumptions were, were that they would be moved from the overburden on the east side to the underburden where you need fill on the west side. And what, what was done between 2009 and 2013 was there is a more proactive assumption made, that we would be working on reducing the overburden on the east side and, and moving that offsite to places like Candlestick Hunters Point, where some of the overburden is now being shipped and then taking in new material on the west side. So having the soil operations business take care of that. I just wanted to make a clarification about, about where the 1.1 comes from, but more importantly, to make sure that the commission understands that includes, it includes in those numbers several hundred million dollars that are direct community benefits to build parks. This is not just to build streets, it's not just to build utilities. Furthermore, uh, as, as the consultants mentioned earlier, that there, the, the community facilities district tool, uh, is a very effective tool for help offsetting the utilities and street cost. So of that 1.1, if you're taking a couple of hundred million off for the community benefits, uh, that are associated with building parks and, and, and the like, there is a certain amount that can be funded in the, you know, in, in the 600 to 800 million dollar range that can, can help be funded by these community facilities districts. And yes, those are costs that are fronted by a developer or a developer's financial partner and then are offset through a bonding mechanism that adds an additional tax. I live in a master plan community and I pay those taxes myself and they're very clearly disclosed by, by state requirements. So along, in fact, with payments of bonds for, um, you know, tax assessments for things like new library facilities and, and these are, these are disclosures that are, are necessary. So I just wanted to make sure that those items were, were clearly understood. And I'd, I'd agree on two points with the previous speaker on, A, that the hotel revenues, now we're on the fiscal impact side, only the general fund element, uh, side in terms of impact, that, that the projection of revenues, the highest projection of revenues on the general fund clearly are tied to the 18 or 1900 hotel rooms that the CPP envisions. And just as a reference point, Mission Bay, which is at build-out, about 16 million square feet of development, 5,000 housing units, uh, an institutional campus for UCSF, um, they're, they're in just the last couple of years of their build-out right now and they're only beginning after 20 years to build their first hotel, their only hotel, 250 rooms. And so it, it, it is a pragmatic reality that, that the fiscal impacts, as my understanding, uh, the directive of the city is for them to not be negative. But I, I would, would ask the commission to seriously reconsider the notion that development itself doesn't have positive benefit on the city because that 1.1 billion is to bring tremendous benefit to clean up a, a toxic legacy from the last century and to provide tremendous, tremendous access to underutilized transportation infrastructure and also to reclaim some of these lands and, and, uh, bring back some of the habitats. Those costs are, are built in. I just wanted to clarify those few things and thank you.
Do you have any sort of breakdown of east versus west remediation costs?
They are, they're, they're, um, the estimates that were submitted to staff were broken down according to, um, a, a combination of the actual street networks that, that were for the CPP and the DSP, essentially linear feet of streets and all the utilities that would run underneath of those streets and the grading and, and such that was associated with that. And then the second part of what was addressed in each of those scenarios were comprehensive project costs that were broken down, um, according to area. So, so you can take a look at those to, to get some breakdowns. I think it would be a little bit, uh, onerous to get into it this time of the evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good information. All right. Thank you all for, uh, contributing. The motion to close public comments.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I make a motion to close the public hearings.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Okay. Items initiated by staff? Anything, John?
Oh, just a couple scheduling issues. One is we probably at some point need to get some word from the commission about tentative summer schedules in terms of a meeting schedule over the summer and who may or may not be available. Also, there may be the need to reschedule the, uh, July 28th meeting. We may have a conflict with the city council, may need to have that meeting date, uh, because of some of their own scheduling issues. So we may need to move our, our, uh, July 28th meeting.
Okay.
We'll be checking in with you later on that. And again, we'll be moving forward with Baylands hearings for the next meeting in, second meeting in April. And maybe at that point, we can talk about a schedule moving forward and, um, and when we might sort of estimate where we're getting to the point of, uh, wrapping up deliberations. So that's something we could discuss maybe at our next meeting, once we have another deliberation session. That's all I had.
Okay, great, thank you. So we should all start looking at our calendars more closely. Any, uh, items initiated by the commission?
I do have a question about the park side that, um, before, that was gonna take place before the council and that has been, um, rescheduled for June 2nd, I believe.
That's correct.
Can you give us some more information about that? What's been going on?
Um, well, the consultant's been working on, you know, there was some technical, uh, some economic work and some technical, um, localized transportation work done. They obviously received a lot of public input at the various sessions they've been, that they sponsored and the city held. And so now they're, they're trying to consolidate that input into a series of, of...
So are we current now with the state or not?
Current with the state in terms of our formal legal obligation.
Yes.
Now that deadline has come and gone. You know, I would argue that our process is leading very good due diligence and progress to achieving this and, and we anticipate to have a positive report back next time we have to report back to the state, which is annually.
And also, didn't the state want to have some design elements from us or not really anymore?
It's not required.
For the park side?
No.
No, they didn't need anything?
No.
Okay, that was, I think that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Good, 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 okay. All right, can we have a motion to adjourn to our next meeting, April 28th at the regular time, 7:30?
Carolyn's gonna make a motion this.
I am. All right. I make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of April 28th, 2016 at 7:30 PM.
Second. Great. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye.